City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Janice Crane, Youth Director for First United Methodist Church of Longview. Please rise.
Will you pray with me? Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the creation that you have made around us and we thank you for the creation of us, that you loved us so much that you just gave this beautiful, bountiful blessings. We also pray, Lord, that we seize each day as a new day of what we can do in the service of your kingdom. And I pray over these councilmen, the police, the firefighters, and everyone that works with the city and for the city for the betterment and improvement of the citizens of this town. Thank you for letting us be a beacon to all people that they are welcome into the city of Longview and through your grace that we service each and every one. It is by your hand that we are made and it is by your voice and your spirit within us that we are led. Dear Heavenly Father, help us to use discernment in the decisions we make as a city and have grace and compassion for those that need it. It is in your name that we pray. Amen.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Janice, thank you very much. Tonight's employee recognition, we are recognizing the Longview Public Safety Communications Division that serves as our 911 answering point and dispatch center for the city of Longview's police, fire, and EMS services. Spread across four shifts of dedicated men and women, this diverse group of employees provides emergency communication service to the citizens of Longview 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. As a TCOLE licensed position, these individuals must complete a rigorous course of training that typically takes a minimum of 12 months and are called upon to routinely demonstrate calmness and even thinking in times of crisis. In 2016, Longview PSC answered over 256,000 phone calls, averaging nearly 700 calls per day. From medical emergencies and fires to incidences of criminal activity, this is an industry where each ring of the phone brings something completely unpredictable and communication staff have to be mentally and emotionally prepared for anything. Over the last year, the Public Safety Communications Division has played a key role in preserving the health and safety of our citizens and first responders. They have provided life-saving CPR instructions, assisted delivery of babies, provided reassurance and comfort to residents dealing with acts of violence, performed countless other acts of quiet heroism that go largely unnoticed. And to the PSC telecommunicators, this is simply doing your job. Regardless, this group of professionals excels in providing outstanding emergency services to callers experiencing what can best be the most challenging and frightening times of their lives. The men and women of Longview Public Safety Communications are a key component of the public safety family and deserve recognition for their services. Please come forward. Randy Ross, seven years of experience. Jordana Mannion, 14 years of experience. Deborah Raven, 29 years of experience. Casey Lawson, 14 years of experience. Sherinda Neville, 17 years of experience. And Matt Ainsworth, 17 years of experience. Okay, if you've ever used 911, raise your hand. Because I have. And I can tell you, I don't know who I talk to, but these are the most professional, calm, caring people on the other end of the phone when you're having a crisis and that's what it's all about. Because the last thing you need is for you to be in crisis mode and them to be in crisis mode. That doesn't work. They do their job with such professionalism and as we read, they protect our first responders, they protect our citizens, they give instruction over the phone to help people cope with what they're going through at that point in time. And that requires really quick, clear, and concise thinking. And these individuals represent that to the most amazing talents that I've ever seen. Don't try them out by calling 911. Don't do that. But if you ever have to use 911, they'll answer that phone and they will take care of you. And I am so proud to have you all as our 911 operators. You all are such a factor of safety and comfort for both the citizens and for the responders in our community. So thank you all for a job more than well done, a job done to the highest level we could ask of you. With all these years of experience, this is a really, really amazing group of people. Thank you all so very much. Thank you all again. Once again, give the round of applause, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, I'm going to break from the agenda just a second, Jim. It's going to be okay. Don't worry, buddy. I got this. If we didn't do these employee recognitions, you all would never know the faces behind the people that are answering the phone to 911 and other faces that we bring up here every meeting so that you all get to see who's doing the jobs for us as citizens. So I appreciate city staff doing this every meeting and lining this up because I think it's important. People need, we all recognize what a great job they do, but public recognition makes you do your job even better. And I think we need to continue doing this because I think everybody wants to hear someone say, "Good job." That's not why they do it, but it sure makes it for a better workplace when you're acknowledged for what you're doing. So thank you all for bearing with me on this. I know it's different, but I think it's very important. And I appreciate the city staff for doing what we're doing. And I appreciate those people that come up here every week and get recognized because that's not what they do it for, but I think they deserve every minute of it. So thank you all very much for indulging me. Citizen comment. I have no speaker card tonight. Would anyone like to speak? Ah, never mind. I do have a speaker card. Danny Watley. Jimmy Isaac, come on up, buddy.
The reason why I'm here, I got a ticket there at Longview Mall.
Mr. Watley, excuse me just one second. Would you please state your name and your address for us, please?
Sure. Dan Watley. Live at 412 Greenleaf.
Thank you, sir.
The reason why I'm here, I got a ticket at the Walmart, at the parking lot, on Gimmie Road. And a vehicle next to me, a SUV, had encroached into my handicap parking spot. So I had to move over like six, eight inches over into the yellow side. And I understand y'all have a citizen or citizens that go around writing tickets for those who are handicapped, parking a handicap illegally, which I don't mind. But my problem is, sometimes these people are so overzealous, they don't look at the big picture. For example, I was told by a police officer, one of these citizens wrote a ticket to a person whose handicap placard was on the seat of the front of the car, but she forgot to put it hanging up on the windshield, rearview mirror. And she got a $500 ticket. I just feel like, you know, there needs to be some leeway, you know. When you get a ticket or about to get a ticket, you know, they should look at the whole picture for the right you're ticket. Because a $500 ticket, that's a big chunk of money. And that's my beef for today. But I appreciate y'all taking my time, your time, to listen to my small complaint.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming forward to us. Sir, we will take that into account. Appreciate you very much. Anyone else like to speak that hasn't filled out a speaker card? Jimmy, you don't have to fill out a speaker card. You're okay. Oh, I thought you were coming up to speak. All right, we're at the presentation items. Amphitheater update. Peggy Vaughn, Lead Co-Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Mack. David, council. So I wanted to give you, said I would come during the feasibility study and give you an update on our findings and then our activities so you can kind of understand how the progress is going forward. This is a painting that Sean did yesterday. Actually, it's not. He did this. Where's Sean? Somewhere here. Okay. But this is what we're going to talk about is our visit that we made to Rogers to see the Walmart amp. So, do I have, okay. Okay, so a small group of us went and toured the facility at the Walton Arts Center with their Vice President of Operations. Just a little background on this amphitheater, which is a little bit unique from most of the ones we will talk about, is this one is owned by the Arts Center and it sort of came out of, they were putting on amphitheater-like productions in the parking lot of their mall. And so people thought, "We need a better venue." Someone donated land in Rogers. It constricted some things in the building that we, you know, we walked through and got some identification of those things that, you know, if you had all the space, you would build differently. But they built this two or three years ago. The operations person has just been there in the past couple of years, very experienced. She was the one I mentioned to you, we have a contract with as an advisor and it's been very helpful. But she helped with the Tuscaloosa Amphitheater that's been open a couple of years, building that one. She's, she actually, they allow her to do consulting with amphitheaters that are doing feasibility, so she's been very helpful. But we spent two days with her. I think we'll, I'll talk a little bit about some of the variability aspects of an amphitheater because it's good to know what things generate money and what are some of the decisions that we'll be making should we decide to go forward. So that's the amphitheater from the grass, as you can tell. You'll see the gray down there are the fixed seats. The black right in front of them are box seats. And then there's a place between those box seats and the stage, which is called the pit and I'll talk to you a little bit about that. That's really what you see there. The orange that you see are buildings that house their concessions and other things. So again, a great view because you see those tents. If you go to the next slide, should I be moving these? I wanted to show this because if you drive down I-49, I think it is, you will see this because, and there's the interstate. So you see the proximity that it is from the interstate. This is, we're up in the upper left-hand side, I guess if you're at the top. And that's more concessions and things here. There is a little bit of a structure, sort of if you see a crisscross. That's the awning for where their VIP area is. They took down the tent that covers it, but they have a section for VIPs there. But this is, again, looking from the upper side. But we wanted to show you the proximity between that and the interstate. Okay? These are some of the things we talked about with them. We talked about event revenue and expenses, which I think was, you know, the process you go through is you create a bid sort of P&amp;L for everyone, you know, for an event. And that's what you negotiate from. You know, what are you gonna, what portion of the ticket sales are they going to get? What portion, you know, what's the expenses? And that's what you negotiate with the promoter that is promoting the person performing. And so what's very important are these gray seats because those are the seats that you get, you know, the highest revenue and those are the ones that you will negotiate a ratio. So one of our, you know, decision points should we go forward is how many of those fixed seats do we have? The grass part is probably the cheapest thing to construct, but how big do you want that? And their amphitheater, for example, is adding another thousand seats. So it does change, you know, the model on how many seats you have. The black seats, which are the box office seats, those are seats that actually don't generally get negotiated. So those are totally revenue for the amphitheater, but those are where people buy a box, have your name on it, you know, you buy it for the season. So the revenue model is a little bit, you know, different on the seats and the sharing ratio on boxes, usually the performer doesn't get revenue off that. On this one too, you see a little bit more of what's called the pit. That's that place. And there are numbers on the floor and depending on the performer, they may ask you to put chairs and the chairs are not able to, somebody pick it up and throw it instead. They're all hooked together, so they're very safety kind of a situation. Or they may, that performer may say, "You know, I like people just standing and screaming at us." So it helps them. So they will define how you, you know, plan the event. So all of these venues have a different model on what that particular performer wants and that really dictates quite a bit on how you set up the event. So luckily, you know, we're off-season here at this one, so we walked through. We probably spent two and a half hours walking through that. So they talked again about the revenue and expenses and how you bid for an opportunity and they talked about, then the personnel and operating requirements. So we went through every category of people that you need, both temporary and full-time, where they come from. I found a job that I'm going to have, it's going to be called a runner because you get to go take the VIPs, you know, around. So they drive the cars with the VIPs. But there's all, I mean, the list of people that when these things happen, you know, you either have and we'll talk a little bit about that model because it doesn't have to be, obviously, all employees of the city. But they had some very unique ways. They used local people, groups, and, you know, either as concessionaires or things and then they contributed money back to their organization. So they, Wendy had just a tremendous number of things to, you know, that you can think of about using local groups that volunteers in areas and then you just, you know, you pay back their organization, which I'm sure there'll be a lot that, you know, we could help that way. So anyway, that's sort of the seat idea and you can see this, this is, you know, from the side view here. The next one, we talked about naming rights. I think I counted, and if you look up above the word box office, you'll see Procter &amp; Gamble. You can't really see here, but this is their entry gate. It has a name. I counted, there are like 10 things that are named. So the amphitheater itself is named. That, the facility that has the screen in it has the pavilion name of that. There are names for, obviously, the box office has a name, the entry has a name, the VIP event has a name. So these are all opportunities for people to get naming rights and you permanently, you know, for a period of time. And so we went through the sponsor model, you know, how do, what do they pay and how long do they pay that? Even she said in Tuscaloosa, they had inside the fence, you said, they had some places that, they had a Mercedes sponsor, that a Mercedes, you know, would be there, you know, during it and they would have, you know, a car sponsor. Then there's what I would call the sponsorship for all the concessionaires. The soft drink, you know, they give you, they give you all the machines, you know, and you may be exclusive or not, you know. Any vendor that's there, they usually have a sponsorship deal plus, you know, that they pay you plus you, you know, may or may not exclusive. The name for the pit had a big thing on the ground that had a name. So there's all kinds of opportunities for you to put, the banners on the lawn, you know, had, I forget what company it was, but had banners and the lawn had a name. So there's lots of opportunities, I think, for small businesses and big businesses or individuals, you know, to put more permanent things up. When you walked in here on the left side of the box office, I mean, they had their founding sponsors, but on the left side was a fairly large, nice-looking sign that had a lot of logos on it and those were the ones that might change year to year, the gold, silver, whatever. So again, it was, you know, there's a lot, a lot of revenue that comes from naming rights and sponsorships. We were talking to them about the economic impact and that's one of the things that in our feasibility study that they are assessing. But just looking in that area, they pointed out what was there when they moved there. There was JB Hunt had a building and there was Embassy Suites. All of the restaurants, all the buildings, everything was, you know, was since this got built. So it really, and we're getting some information, she's going to see if Rogers will give us, you know, more information. But some of the interviews the consultant is doing, they're actually telling them what the economic impact is, you know, for the area to put the amphitheater in. We then met with the architect, which was really a good meeting and we had the manager for construction. So he could, you know, he could talk about, and Roland was there, Keith, he could really talk about, you know, all the engineering. I mean, that, you know, where do you get that kind of structure? You know, what are the key elements of it? What were the design elements that were important? And, you know, as I said, their process, they went from just get it out of a parking lot to get it a better, and they were in Nirvana when they built this. But now that actually it's been so popular, they're going through a construction to add more things on the back. They're going to add more, you know, concessions. I mean, they're expanding theirs, you know, on the limited property they have. So I think one of our lessons learned is, you know, when we, when we look at a place to locate it, we want to make sure that we have the footprint of what we, you know, what we want to build and then that will dictate. They were sort of dictated by the, in fact, if you see right here from the street you let off to the front gate, you can see those poles, that's how big it is. So it's very congested, they said in the beginning, but again, they were limited on their space. So that's a little background on things we learned. We just learned a tremendous amount, you know, from that visit. So the feasibility update, as you know, we're working with the consulting firm CSL. We have a weekly discussion with them. They have been interviewing major concert promoters and those are the folks that actually book events. So they've been asking them about this market and the tiers and I'll talk a little bit about the event tiers that would fit in the Longview market and I'll explain a little bit about the event tiers. They are looking at comparable amphitheaters and I'll show you, they're starting to pull this together, but I'll show you what on the Walmart, since we've talked about them, one of the kinds of comparisons they're doing. And they're looking at the operations model. As I mentioned, there are a lot of people that operate these, but there are operators that run these, there's a lot of moving parts. There are operators that you actually can get to do, you know, what the city can't do or doesn't want to do and it's better to get somebody in the business like ticketing and promotions and, you know, a lot of the venue things that are specifically when an event happens and then the things that the city could do. As I mentioned, most of the amphitheaters we've looked at are managed by cities. So most of them have an operator that they use to help in many of the areas that just aren't really what cities, you know, cities have expertise in. So we're moving along with them. So the next slide. So just a couple of slides, again, just as background here. What they're talking about with these promoters is what is the tiers, I mentioned, the event tier. And these are the four event tiers as they talk about, you know, somebody that performs. And it's really indicative of how much of a guarantee of revenue that you have. So someone that's a tier one, like a Beyonce, they get a certain amount. I'm sure that's what you get, you probably get some more than that, but that's an average. Plus they get, you know, gross ticket sales per show. The tier two is between 200 and 800. You can see tier three and tier four. But they talk about, you know, the markets in terms of performers in a tier. And as you can see over here, when you spend a dollar on a ticket, you can see what it goes to. 65 to 70% goes to the artist and then the rent is 20%. They pay expenses, you know, that's why you have that P&amp;L that you negotiate with them. And then the promoter profit gets 5 to 10%. So again, that whole putting that, having, understanding how to put that P&amp;L together prevents the kind of thing you use for that external expertise. But we'll be talking about these tiers when we come back and talk about what Longview's market is at the end of the study. So just as an example, this is Walmart. This is one of how they're doing comparable amps. So in the Walmart scenario, they have here 21 concerts. You can see 48% are tier two and you can see the names of the ones that were on there last year performing. 24% were tier three. They actually had, you know, two people or three people up there in tier one. And generally, the tier one go to like the AT&amp;T stadiums. I mean, these are people that don't generally come to many amphitheaters because they, because of the cost, they have to go to a much bigger venue to get enough seats, you know, to, and they fill those up. So you, you know, they would have more people than you could put in any amphitheater. So generally, tier one don't come to amphitheaters. They do it off-season, you know, when they're, you know, but generally they, you know, and they do fewer events. The tier one folks, they might do 10 events a year and they make a lot of money. Whereas when you get down, they get less money, they do more events and they go around to, you know, certainly hit the amphitheaters. But that's how they explained to us, you know, we're looking at all of the comparable sites in the venue of, you know, what is their tier? And then some examples here. Go to the next slide. And then this is, I guess to wrap it up, this is our timeline, just to let you know, we're doing the market demand analysis. So we're looking at local market conditions, the value benchmarking, you know, they're interviewing organizers and then we'll do a projection and sort of, what is the tier that makes sense for Longview based on those interviews? And then we'll move into some site and building program, financial analysis and funding analysis discussion. So we're going to go through with them, you know, how we would fund this. The draft report is in March and I mentioned to David earlier today that, you know, we were hoping that maybe March the 23rd that they would present to the council. So what their findings are and also the report. So we would have the consultant, not me, doing that presentation of everything of their findings, so. So that's a little background on what we've been doing and where we're heading. So I'll be back next time and give you a little more update on how things are moving. But I think it's been a very interesting, we're learning a lot. And I appreciate, actually very much appreciate, and Lead Co. Board appreciates because those guys are back trying to get companies to come to Longview. The help of the staff in Longview, they've been phenomenal in helping us, you know, work through this. So I appreciate that.
Peggy, I want to thank you and all the city staff that embarked on this endeavor because all it does is show that we're, we're going to leave no stone unturned. We're going to try to vet this out as thoroughly as we can before we make any kind of a move. And that's, that's, that's very admirable and I appreciate that. And I know it's a lot of work and a lot of, a lot of time, but that's why we pay y'all the big bucks. Oh, that's why we don't pay y'all. I forgot. We don't pay y'all.
Well, I think we've got an excellent consulting group. I think we all agree, David, don't you? This is a phenomenal group. I think we picked the right one and this consultant we have, I think we'll, we'll have a good story, you know, whichever way it goes.
Well, the information you're bringing back to us is invaluable. It helps us evaluate and analyze this and I thank you very much for the time and effort y'all are putting into it. Thank you so much. Look forward to our next report. We're at the Public Safety Update. Chief Bishop.
Mayor Mack, councilmembers, Mr. Willard. Thanks for allowing me to give you an update tonight. I'd like to announce once again our free women's safety course that will begin April 3rd through 8th from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. During this free course, we're going to cover women's safety, workplace violence, women handgun safety, have an opportunity to utilize our firearms simulator and we'll spend a day at the range putting forth some of those handgun safety techniques that are taught during the course. Anybody that's interested can register by calling 903-808-3388 and talking with Officer Christie Bryan. I'd like to update you on, back this past summer, we had several groups come together, several citizens come together and hold various fundraisers to raise money for the purchase of ballistic vests for the officers out there on the front line. Of course, this is following the murder of the five Dallas police officers. We had a couple of organizations come together and form, hold various t-shirt sales, various fundraisers to help offset the cost of some of these ballistic vests for our officers. So I'd kind of like to give you a little report on where we're at with that. The Longview Police Officers Association kind of took the lead in working with these organizations and to date today, $59,195 has been raised for the purchase of these vests. We have 64 of the vests purchased and on hand, ready to deploy early next week to the officers and we have 20 more that are out there that are, that are ordered now. While these groups have been great raising this money and having these fundraisers, this past week, we did receive an anonymous donation in the amount of $8,000. And there's a note that was attached to this anonymous donation and they wanted me to let everybody know that this donation is in honor of Mayor Andy Mack for bringing to our attention the need for protective vests to protect those who protect us. So this, this $8,000 is not included in the previous slide. So thank you all very much for the information that you're putting out and the need for these vests and hopefully we'll have some more fundraisers and obtain a goal to be able to purchase a vest for every officer. I'd like to talk just very briefly on counterfeit money. We've been having a lot of counterfeit money floating around. We've made several arrests with counterfeit money. There's one particular counterfeit money that's being circulated and that is motion, what they refer to as motion picture money. It's money that's made to be used in motion pictures. How this gets How this gets into our, our population, people get ahold of this, and then they pass this off as real money. So I'd like to encourage our merchants and our citizens to, to double-check their bills and make sure that they're getting real money instead of this counterfeit money. So there's a lot of it out there circulating around. Also, we have just completed submitting our crime statistics for the Uniform Crime Report for 2016 to DPS, Texas Department of Public Safety. And I'd like to report to you tonight that our overall crime index, as far as overall crimes reported for 2016, is down just a little over 3 percent. Of course, we've seen an increase in our persons crimes of 30 percent, and our, and a decrease in our property crimes of just a little over 5 percent. Most of our property crimes, with the exception of burglary, went down. And of course, we've seen some increase in sexual assault and aggravated sexual assault on the, on the persons crimes. So these are our numbers for 2016, they're submitted to DPS. On the 27th of this month, they'll be submitted to the FBI for tabulation with them. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Chief Bishop, I know you had a hard week this week and last week, and I appreciate y'all's dedication and the successes you've had in apprehending the criminals that are out there. Thank you so much, and thank you for the update, very nice.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you for the donation, whoever, we appreciate that very much. We appreciate the citizens of Longview realizing the needs and stepping up and doing what we should do. We're a great giving community. Thank you so much, Chief.
Thank you.
Chief Tillman.
Mayor Mack, Members of Council, Mr. Willard, thanks for the opportunity to update you on a few things that have been happening in the Fire Department since we last met. First and foremost, I'm happy to report that we are whole again in terms of having all of our crews back in Fire Station Number Five out on the west side of town. The majority of the repairs have been completed, there's still a little minor, a couple of minor projects that are going to happen on the exterior of the building, but it wasn't anything to prevent the crews from moving completely back into the fire station, they did that over the weekend, so we're happy to be back in our normal place. And thanks to all the other departments, the teamwork piece of this I mentioned last time, everybody coming together to help us see this to an end, it's greatly appreciated. I also want to give a quick shout-out to firefighter Sean Stone. Sean retired from our department officially, officially it's not until tomorrow, but we had a retirement ceremony for him yesterday. Sean put in 20 years of service with the Fire Department. He's at the point in his life where he wants to make a career change and try something new while he's young, so he's going to jump out to the private sector for a little while. He's been a great employee, we hate to lose him, but we're certainly happy for his service and the way he's made our Fire Department better through the years. I've had the pleasure this week, I'm one of many city employees that participate with junior achievement here locally. And every year, I have the opportunity to go into a second grade class, my, the classroom that I'm in is in South Ward Elementary, to hang out with the kids, and basically I spend an hour a day for five consecutive days, and we do a little mini civics class. And it's always such a pleasure to get in with these kids, and we talk about how money works, we talk about how important different businesses are in our community, we talk about the difference of government, the local, the federal, the state level. It's just such a great time to get involved with these kids and find out, it's amazing at what they pay attention to and what they pick up just from either hearing their parents talk, or watching TV, or just the conversations they have in class. We have a great time. We had an election today, and one of the things that they learned about was how the majority process works. They got to, they got to choose between three things of what they wanted to see in their community, a recycling program, a butterfly garden, or art. And art won hands down, they wanted to see more art in their community. So I have a little message from them to you, because we did talk about city government, so we'll see how that works out.
[Singing]
So, they just wanted to give a shout-out, they thought that was so cool to get to talk to the mayor, and I'm sure they would love to have been here if they could, but it's a school night, so I'm sure they have homework to do, but it's been a great time, and I thank Ms. Dash and the administrators there at South Ward for letting me come in and visit with these kids and, and do what we get to do for junior achievement. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Chief, once again, thank you for getting out and educating the public and being available and letting people know that you all are real people, and it makes a difference. And I know it's, I know it's time-consuming, but it makes a huge difference in our community. Thank you all for what you do.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate you. We're now at a consent agenda, any items the council has to pull off for separate discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're now to zoning, we have a public hearing to be held to consider it Z16-04. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, Members of Council, and then Mr. Willard. The applicant is requesting to rezone property located on East Loop 281. It's approximately 11.7 acres, from agricultural to general retail. Prior to the planning and zoning meeting, staff along with the applicant held a neighborhood meeting with some of the surrounding residential properties. The applicant had originally proposed a larger area to be rezoned, has scaled it back from 20 acres to 11.75 acres. The remainder of this property will be left as agricultural zoning at this time. East Loop 281 is a principal arterial roadway, which is appropriate for retail-type uses. Planning and zoning commission and staff recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any speakers? Any discussion? All of the Patel's are here, in case we have any questions, and thank you guys for being here. Any questions, any concerns? Public hearing is now closed.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, carry on. We're now to have public hearing on application PD 17-01.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to amend PD 1506, you've seen this in the past, to revise a site plan to allow for a drive-through windows, one window, and adjustment to a building size. The original planned development proposed a building that was approximately 5,500 square feet, and the building will now be approximately 7,500 square feet with a new drive-through window. Planning and zoning commission along with staff recommend, recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This also requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any speaker cards? Anyone care to speak? I know Mr. Zorn is here, in case there's any questions. And once again, thank you, sir, for what you're doing, keep up the good work. This public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any, any opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Act 8, Consider Resolution Authorizing Participation in Coalition of Similarly Situated Cities in Text with Statement of Intent to Change Rates Ready to City Gate Services and Pipeline Transportation of Atmos Pipeline, Texas filed on January 6th. Mr. Finley.
Mayor and Council, Atmos Pipeline, Texas filed on January 6th of this year, a statement of intent with the Railroad Commission of Texas to increase their revenue approximately $72.9 million or a 17.38 increase over current revenues. The proposed increase directly affects distribution gas utility companies, which is a separate company, which would be like Atmos MidTex, which is the one that you get your gas from. It is expected that Atmos MidTex will pass along this cost from the pipeline to its customers, so therefore we're asking to intervene. Under Texas law, the Railroad Commission has exclusive original jurisdiction over gas pipeline companies, therefore the only way we're able to evaluate is to intervene at the Railroad Commission, and what this resolution is, allows us to look at this transportation cost that will ultimately be passed on, we believe, to the customers when, and when and if it goes into effect. So I'd ask that it be approved.
Any questions, Mr. Finley?
I do, Mayor.
Please, Mr. Moore.
Since we do not have original jurisdiction, we don't have the authority to postpone the effective date. Has the Railroad Commission done that?
Yes, they have for 150 days.
Okay. Do you have any feel for what the percentage rate increase would be for the typical residential customer?
I don't, it would not be, at this point, we do not.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Finley.
Yes, sir.
We went to kind of the same situation with SWEPCO a few meetings ago, correct? Similar?
Yeah, this is a unique one, and it's not, this is the pipeline, it's not the actual utility that distributes it to the customers, but it's similar, yes.
So what you're saying is that Atmos is going to do a pipeline, and they're, we assume they're going to pass the cost on to the customers, are we trying to limit that, is that what we're trying to do?
No, Atmos, this is a different company, this is Atmos Texas Pipeline. It's a, it's a separate company from Atmos Energy, right. And what they do, they have pipelines all through it, they're not building anything, it's what they charge to transport within the, within the pipelines.
So we're trying to limit that to the customers?
It's the only opportunity we have to participate in, in, in the review of that rate, because that rate will be set by the Railroad Commission, and in the past, the utility, the gas distribution companies, like Atmos MidTex, the one that you write your check out to every month, they generally pass that on to the customer. So the only way we'll be able to look at this is to participate in this proceeding.
Well, I know it's, it's a legal battle, and I appreciate you being in charge of that, Jim. I know you're looking out for the citizens, and we appreciate it greatly. Is there a motion on this?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. We're now to items of community interest, Mr. Moore.
Nothing, Mayor.
We need to excuse Ms. Snotty.
I'd like to offer motion to excuse Councilwoman Nona Snotty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Williams.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to begin by congratulating President, the new President of the NAACP, Reverend Lamar Jones, many of you know him, a friend of the community, and I wish he and his new, the new administration, the best in their efforts, and I am a member as well. Number two, want to encourage everyone, if you have not yet, purchase your tickets for the 35th Annual Hearts of Love Scholarship to our benefiting top teens of America, please see me or another member of Top Ladies of Distinction Incorporated, we'd love to have you, it's coming up next Saturday, the 18th, at the Summit Club. I want to add a couple of other things. Chief, thank you, very encouraged to hear that crime is down overall by 3 percent. A lot of times, we don't hear the big picture, so thank you for that. Chief, Fire Chief and Police Chief, I love the fact, not only the video you showed, but I like the fact that the young people said they wanted to see more art in the community. I'm a huge advocate for the arts community, and I would love to see the same thing happen eventually. It takes money, but we work in tandem with Longview Museum of Fine Arts to create public art. So I love that, and thank you for being a force that's working with those young people to help them to continue to be encouraged. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Ishihara.
Nothing for me.
Mr. Wright.
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Pertle. Mr. Willard.
I want to thank, or congratulate Councilman Wright on the New England Patriots winning the Super Bowl. I know he's proud about that.
Thank you, Mr. Willard.
I have to say, it was something. Yeah. Okay, I have a few items here, the Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center is having a Valentine's Day event this Saturday, February 11th, from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. 14 percent off adoptions and free microchips. So come by and get your pet and get a microchip. Can we put those on humans, or just on dogs, cats? I'd love to know where my wife is all the time. No, I really would, to be honest, I'd be better off not knowing. We have a book sale at the Longview Library, February 16th to the 19th, kids' book, books and paperbacks are only 25 cents, everything else is $1. Run by the library, pick up some books, there's nothing like reading, it's the greatest thing in the world. What's for, reading is knowledge, knowledge is power. They didn't write that, I said that myself.
Very good.
Gotcha, Sean. Okay, this is another one. Okay, listen, guys, ladies, gentlemen, Longview citizens, as Chief Bishop just said, we are a very giving, kind community. This is something we need to, we need to give to. The veterans have done a phenomenal job at Teak Park. They have made that park a showplace for our community, they have put in so many hours of labor and sweat and blood and tears and lives given for this park to be what it is. And we need to finish this park off by completing the donation process. There's still about $60,000 short for paying for the Vietnam Memorial Wall, and we need to donate to this. Give $5. If every citizen would give $5 to this VetPlaza.org, we would have this done tomorrow. They deserve this, they've earned this, and we're the recipients of their sacrifices. So give your $5, give your $10, get whatever you can give. At the bottom of the homepage, you will see Donate Today. Click the link, and it takes you to the donation page, and all you have to do is choose the amount. Your donation to the Veterans Foundation is greatly appreciated. I really and truly am encouraging you to do this, I think it's a worthy, worthy, worthy cause. It's good for our city, it's good for our veterans, but there's no words to say how much they deserve and how little they get. So give your $5. Please, let's get this completed. Upcoming events, there are several events throughout Longview community, the Home and Design Show, and back up, I'm going to show this slide every council meeting until the donation is completed. So if y'all don't want to keep seeing this slide, start donating, because I'm not going to let this go until this is done. This is something that our city deserves and our veterans deserve more than anything else, so please join me in that, in that process. The Home and Design Show will be held at Mod Cobb on February 10th through the 12th, visit that, it's a great place to see things going on, and you'd be surprised what's going on in Homes and Designs these days, it's amazing what they're coming up with. The Longview Symphony Winter Concert will be held February the 17th. The Gray County Historical Museum, March to Freedom, is February the 1st to the 25th, so please join that. For more information on these events, please check out the calendar at visitlongviewtexas.com and learn more. Get your calendar, your event on our calendar, we will talk about it during the meeting. Survey, oh, no, no, yeah, survey time. We got off that little thing real quick, do that before we get scholarship. Okay. This is a little bit different than the question, but here we are. I'm shocked at this, to be honest, I'm shocked at the results today. What would you estimate the city of Longview's income, incoming sales tax revenue is total was in 2016? The actual amounts were 75,350, 507,50, 10 million, and 20 million. 0% said 75,000, which is good, because it's way more than 75,000. 6% said 350,000. 16% said 500,000. 31% said 750,000. 34% said 10 million. And 12% said 20 million. It's 20 million.
I got it right.
It's $20 million, ladies and gentlemen, that's what our annual sales tax revenues are, and even though they've been depressed over the last number of months, this is what we use in our budget to help fund the projects that we do in the city and to provide for our public safety and all the other things that we do. So this is a staggering figure, 20 million dollars. But what it tells us is, I mean, most of the citizens don't know even what our sales tax revenues are, but what it also tells you is how important this sales tax revenue is to our general fund budget. David, what does it make up, what percentage of our budget does it make up? 32, almost, almost a third of our budget of our general fund comes from sales tax revenues. So this is why we keep saying, shop local, shop local, shop local. When you do shop local, it comes back to us, which then comes back to you. So it's not that hard to do, I know sometimes it's inconvenient, but it really helps us out, and it promotes our community, and it, it gives us more revenue to be able to provide the services that we need, and it keeps us from having to talk about tax increases and things like that. So it is important, and just how important it is, I was astounded, only 12% knew that the figure was 20 million dollars, so it is an important number. So please shop local and shop often. Okay, what did you think about the commercials at this year's Super Bowl? I loved them 14%. Eh, 34%. They were disappointing, 33%. I didn't watch the Super Bowl, 19%. And what did you watch if you didn't watch the Super Bowl? I mean, what did you watch? I understand, I mean, I didn't cheer for either, either team, but it's a great event, I mean, goodness, it's amazing. But I was very disappointed in the commercials. Usually there's something that stands out in those commercials every year, and nothing hit me this year.
Yeah, like Mr. Kleiner.
It was okay, but it wasn't, it wasn't that grab-you, and you keep talking about it all Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday the next week. And, and do you know how much a 30-second commercial cost in the Super Bowl this year? $5 million. So to me, a lot of people wasted a lot of money, because I can't remember hardly any of the commercials, and they spent $5 million over and over again, so, but that tells you how much advertising is worth in this day and age. It's, it's pretty amazing, so, yeah, I was disappointed, look forward to next year's Super Bowl commercials. Maybe we'll have one for the city, what do you think?
There you go.
Yeah, good one. Okay. Mayor Mack Scholarship. Here's the deal, it's time for you seniors to get your essays in. We will be having the, the announcement, or the, the application will be due by March 31st. I will start to read them at that point in time, and then we will announce our winner sometime in one of the April meetings, probably the first or the second meeting in April, to give our scholarship away. Remember, four scholarships, 12